Okay, I see another person has checked in here. And for the benefit of her and everyone else who may be listening. If you intend to speak during the hearing. Mr. Walsh, our secretary would need a little bit of information from you. So I'll ask Ms. Patterson, if you intend, do you intend to speak during the meeting? You're on mute if you're responding. Okay. And there's Ms. Ramey checking in. Ms. Boyd, you're, my screen shows that you're still connecting to audio, but apparently it's not working. Laura, are you seeing the same thing? Oh, we lost Diana. Make sure Diana doesn't check into the January meeting, Laura.
She's coming right back, so.
Okay. Hello, Diana. There you are. And I apologize, I should have, I should have called you and told you we had voted to do.
Not a problem.
Yeah, so just so everyone knows, Diana went to the township initially and called. Said, hey, it's all dark and I apologized. She missed the last.
Rested everything.
Ms. Ramey did not attend the last meeting, so she didn't know that we had voted to do this virtually today. Okay, so. One more time, I'll just say if anyone intends to speak during the hearings. Please let us know now so that Mr. Walsh can take down a little information from you.
There is one more person joining that's a guest, so Tom, if you want to wait one more second in case Laura wants to speak. And then I will, just let me know and I'll start recording when you're ready.
Okay. So we have Joe Pat- Pattinson and Rob Pattinson. If either of you would tend to speak at all during the hearing today. Either on the scheduled public hearing or on any other matter. Please let us know now so that we can take down a little bit of information from you.
Neither one of us intend to speak, so we're all set. Have a great meeting. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
For letting us be in the audience.
Oh, no sweat. Okay, well, I guess we can begin the, we'll open up.
Recording in progress.
Thank you. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Syo Township Zoning Board of Appeals. For December 16th, 2020 at 7 o'clock PM. Started a little bit late, maybe 7:01 or 7:02, but. Welcome aboard, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. I'd ask Mr. Walsh to take a roll call.
Who, off?
Present.
Culbertson.
Present, Syo Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
I, I apologize, you're right, and I should have done that. So thank you for that gentle reminder. I'll say it again, Thomasoff, appearing remotely from Syo Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan. Ramey.
Present, from Syo Township, Washtenaw County.
Walsh, present, Syo Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan. Shields.
You're on mute, Patrick. And Ms. Ramey, Mr., Ms. Culbertson and Mr. Walsh are all remotely checking in, correct?
Correct.
All right, because I.
I'm here now. Present, Syo Township, Washtenaw County.
Appearing remotely, Patrick?
Yes, I am appearing.
Okay, great. All right, well, we do have a quorum, in fact, we have all of our members present. The next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. I either solicit a request for any additions to the agenda or. A motion to adopt the agenda as, as framed.
I move to adopt the agenda as stood second.
Moved by Ms. Culbertson, seconded by Ms. Ramey to adopt the agenda. Mr. Walsh, call the roll. Yes.
Culbertson.
Yes.
Ramey.
Yes.
Walsh, yes. Shields.
Yes.
Great. The agenda is adopted. Next item in the agenda is the swearing in, so Ms., Mr. Harris, you had indicated. That you do intend to speak tonight, so I would ask you to raise your right hand. And do you swear to. Tell the whole truth and nothing but the, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. You're sworn in. Again, is there any other member of the public who intends to speak today? On either the public hearing or on any other matter? So that we can get some information from you and swear you in. Okay, hearing nothing. We'll move along to. The next item on the agenda, which is communications or correspondence. We did get an email from. The clerk regarding adoption of procedures, but. Which was sent to all the members, I believe. And we already have procedures in place, which I think cover. What we need to cover, and I'll mention this again at the end of the meeting, but apparently. We will be going for in-person meetings only beginning in January. Unless the legislature sees fit to extend the. The virtual meeting rule. Whether that will happen is anybody's guess, so.
Mr. Chair, there is one element of that, is that. I, I think it's important to say that we would include hybrid attendance for the public. Because that is.
Yeah.
Than our.
Yeah.
Original, yeah.
Yeah, for, it appears that what we will be doing is. Meeting in person for members of the ZBA. But it should be hybrid, meaning that. The public or any other interested persons can, which I guess would be the public. Couldn't attend by, by Zoom, so. That's the way it'll probably come out, coming for our next meeting in January. I'll come back to that. Laura, I was gonna ask you whether we are gonna have. Anything on the plate in January? Do you happen to know one way or the other right now?
Yes, we did receive one application today.
Okay. So I was gonna hold this till a little later, but just as a reminder. To the ZBA members, January, under our rules, the, the January meeting calls for a vote on. The chair, the vice chair and the secretary. So, and I, I definitely don't have the. Inclination to continue on unless you guys really want it, so. Anybody else who wishes to take the reins will be free to speak up in January. As far as the communications or correspondence, we also received. An email from Ms. Wang. With regards to the public hearing. And I'll, I'll read that when we get to the public hearing. Including Ms. Krebs's response to that. I have no other communications or correspondence. Do any of the members of the ZBA have anything? Nothing? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I do want to recognize that I believe there's an applicant that just joined and may need to be sworn in.
Okay, I see that there's Danny Weiser. I hope I pronounced that correctly. If you intend to speak on any matters, including the public hearing or in the public comments section. We just need a little information from you. If you intend to do so, please let us know now. I hear nothing, so I assume that's the case. We, we can do this later too, in case anybody misses, we've missed anyone or. Or. Okay, I do see. Jason has unmuted. Jason, go ahead.
Hi, hi, this is Jason Cooper. I am one of the contractors for the new business under Daniel Weiser's proposal. I wish to be sworn in so I can speak if, if needed. On our topic of agenda tonight.
That'd be, that would be fine. Mr. Walsh will take down a little bit of information from you. Mr. Walsh?
Yes, Mr. Cooper, may I have an address for you and a phone number?
5656 LeBlanc Avenue, Interboro, Michigan, 48103. Resident of Syo Township. I am owner and partner of J&amp;G Construction. Who is speaking on the new business of the variance request. On behalf of Daniel Weiser tonight. Phone number is 734-827-4292.
Thank you. And Mr. Cooper, could I ask you to raise your right hand? And I'll ask you this, do you swear to tell the whole, the truth, the whole truth? In this meeting?
Well, I'm, I'm driving down Jackson Road, so I can't raise my right hand, but I solemnly swear to tell the truth. Thank you.
I guess I can accept that. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Citizens wishing to address the zoning board of appeals on matters which are not on the public hearing portion of the agenda. Or seek information on any other matters. Such oral presentations shall be limited to three minutes, except the representative or spokesperson. Of an organization shall have five minutes to address the board. Are there any persons who wish to make any public comment?
I just wanted to say I'm able to speak now, I was just not able to unmute myself before.
I'm sorry, say that again, Mr. Weiser?
I, I'm able to speak now, I was unable to unmute myself before.
Okay, great, then, Mr. Weiser. I tell you what, we'll come back to you in just a moment. Are there any members of the public? Who wish to speak on any matters which are not on the public hearing? I see Mr. Pattinson has his hand raised. Mr. Pattinson, why don't you go ahead and speak?
Thank you. At last month's meeting, there were four items on the agenda. Two of them were postponed to the December meeting, and that was the digital. Billboards, one at Liberty and Wagner, the other on Jackson Road. That were postponed to December, and they're not on the current list. To be very frank and with you, I have severe concerns about the one at Liberty and Wagner. It's such a big sign, and if they make it digital, somebody's gonna get killed at that intersection because it's gonna be so distracting. And I'm wondering, is there any, have you heard of any plans? For future applications for those signs from the applicant?
Well, I can answer part of the question, but before we go any further, Mr. Pattinson, Mr. Walsh needs to take some information from you, please.
Absolutely.
Mr. Pattinson, as with everyone else, I need your address and phone number, please.
500 North Zeeb.
Yep.
Phone number 662-2674.
48103?
Yes, it is.
That's an Ann Arbor mailing address, Mr. Pattinson?
Indeed, across from the road commission.
Got it, Bob?
Got it.
Okay, Mr. Pattinson, I can say that the two billboard. Matters which were up for last month's meeting were. Oh, put over to this meeting, however, in the meantime, one of them has been withdrawn and, and I'll. Pass it over to Laura in just a moment, because I don't know which one was withdrawn. And the other one is going to be, or perhaps it has been. Resubmitted because of some additional changes or something. Is that correct, Ms. Krebs?
Yes, the Jackson Road application has been withdrawn completely, so that we are no longer going to be having hearing on that one. The Liberty Road, they were asking for digital sign faces and some other. I think. The degree of the faces and an additional face. They are proposing to change that application. I was contacted yesterday by the applicant that thought he was going to be on the December meeting and wanting to submit. Information yesterday for the ZBA. And we told him that was not enough time, so. His response was he will be sending additional information. If it's additional requests, which I believe it will be from the original application, we will have to re-notice the hearing. And we will anyway, because we postponed it to this date and it's not on the agenda, so regardless, it will be, it will be notified again. With whatever variance is he, he decides he wants to seek in the future.
So I, I assume then that the hearings, which is now scheduled for January, is not one of these?
No.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Pattinson, does that answer your question?
Very much so. Thank you so much for the, for the answers, and I appreciate it very much. We'll be ready for either January or February to.
Yeah, please.
Digital sign.
Yeah. Yeah, keep, keep abreast of the, the Syo Township website. For the zoning board of appeals and the agenda will be published as well as the. Packet of materials when it gets a little closer to the date. That's the best way to do it, as far as I know.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming. Are there any other persons who wish to make any public comment on matters which are not subject, the subject of the public hearing tonight? I see no one hands raised. Laura, do you see anybody? Okay, great. Then we'll continue on with the next item on the agenda, which, which is a public hearing. Variance number 21007, Daniel Weiser by J&amp;G Construction Services. Regarding property H-08-15-396-013. At 5121 John Holmes. Request to allow for the construction of the new accessory structure with. Sub 1, a side yard setback of 10 feet rather than required 20 feet. And sub 2, a rear yard setback of 30 feet rather than the required 50 feet. Pursuant to Section 36-75, the schedule of regulations. Of the Syo Township codified zoning ordinance. The way we'll generally conduct the hearing is as follows. The applicant or anyone acting on his or her behalf. Can make a presentation and introduce any evidence. During which time there may be questioning by the ZBA members. After which persons who. Support. Let me make sure I get that right. I was right. Members of the public who support the. Petitioner can speak, after which time persons who oppose, the petitioner may speak. During which additional questions may be asked by the ZBA members. After which time the ZBA members can ask questions of the applicant as needed. And if there's need for rebuttal, we can usually accommodate that. After which time the public hearing will close and the ZBA members will deliberate. And. The decision may or may not be made tonight. So, all of that being said, I would ask. Who will be speaking on behalf of the petitioner seeking the variance?
Garrett with J&amp;G Construction Services.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Harris.
Yeah, so the, the reason we kind of selected this location for, for Danny Weiser's. Accessory building, he, a couple reasons. The septic field is actually on the far right, I guess it'd be the north corner of the house on the opposite side. So we were attempting to stay away from that. As well as kind of the general flow, his, his, his plan. Danny, Danny has a handful of cars, and that's kind of his staging place where he'd like to, he'd like to keep them. And it, it flows with the current driveway. So, so we wanted to, we wanted to use that as well as. The tree line on that side kind of, kind of blocks anybody's view of that barn. Or garage itself. So those were kind of the, the specific reasons we, we chose that location. It's, it's less excavating. And it keeps away from the septic field on the opposite side of the property. And I also noted that there are a handful of properties. Further south on that street that do have a similar situation. A similar setup on their property as we are proposing here.
Let me, let me ask you, Mr. Harrison, could you identify the addresses and. How you arrived at that conclusion?
So, I, I do not have the addresses. I can get onto GIS. That's how I, I did it the first time when I initially submitted for the variance. And I, I basically used your guys' or the, the GIS software to pick the property line and pull to. Those proposed locations.
And do you have any drawing which shows the location of the septic field?
I, I do, and I realize that I did not submit that. I thought I did.
It was in the, uh, report of our consultant that it was not so identified.
Yeah, so I have one from Washtenaw County that I can, I can either, I can send this over right now. Via email or I can submit it to you, but I guess I, I do have that information.
Well, unfortunately, unfortunately, it's difficult. For virtual meetings to get that done, that's why. It was mentioned in the consultant's report, and it's also a very good idea to. Submit that well in advance so that all the members of the ZBA have access to it.
I understand.
Verify everything. Okay, in any event.
Would it be possible to hold up a drawing up to your camera so that we could take a look at it?
It's, it's on my computer. Like I have, I have a hard copy pulled up. I could sketch it on my drawings and, and hold it up generally.
If it's on your computer, can you share your screen?
Yeah.
I can, if you.
You should be able to. There should be a green button at the very bottom that says share screen. And if you click on that, it should let you choose which document if it's already, if it's up. There you go.
Can you, can you see my screen?
Yes, but it, the septic is, where's this taken from?
So this is. Washtenaw County Environmental Health Department.
All right, can you scroll down to the drawing? Well. It, it's. Difficult because the property lines aren't marked there. But, okay.
The corner.
The corner of the house is 76 feet off of the property line. Right corner.
Could you state that again, please? Because your, your audio kind of drifted away on us.
All right, the corner of the house is 76 feet off of the property line.
Okay, thank you. Continue on, please.
Uh, that, those, those were, those were kind of all of the, can I stop sharing my screen first? Sorry, or do you?
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
Those were, those were kind of all the, the points I wanted to touch on. I guess the other thing I was starting to say was. If, if we attempted to put the garage on the opposite side. There's just a tremendous amount of excavating that would have to occur. That we don't really want to, we don't really want to tear up a, a yard just to kind of put a, a garage off to the back, far back property line, but. That is, that's pretty much all I have, sir.
Okay. What kind, what kind of excavating would have to be done?
We'd have to put a driveway in.
Well, okay. All right.
And I guess the last note is we, we do have some letters from the neighbors in support of Danny. I'm not, I don't know if they're needed or if that matters, but I did want to note that. He has talked to his, his neighbors about the, the situation, but.
Well, where are the letters?
Uh, I. Go ahead.
I, I, I actually have one of the letters pulled up on my phone if I can be sworn in to speak and share that.
Okay, didn't I swear you in before, Mr. Weiser?
No, we never got to it.
Okay, Mr. Walsh wants to take Mr. Weiser's information then. I have your address. Could I have your phone number, please?
Phone number's gonna be 734-545-4728.
Okay, Mr. Weiser, could you raise your right hand and. I'll ask you whether you swear, solemnly swear to tell the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you. So you want to screen share that? Can we do that with the?
Yes. Yes, I can do that with my phone right now. I will. Where my screen? Are you able to see my screen now?
Yes.
Okay, all righty, I will pull this up right here. Okay, so this is a letter from my neighbor. It's Ted A. Trower at 5081 John Holmes Road. He has a very similar setup that I believe also had a. He has a very similar setup that I believe also had a variance granted for it. And the letter reads as follows. To who it may concern, Mr. Daniel Weiser recently purchased the home at five, one, two, one, John Holmes Road. We are his neighbors at five, zero, eight, one, John Holmes Road. He has requested assistance in obtaining a variance of the setbacks on the property in order to construct a freestanding garage. If he were to comply with the existing setback requirements, he'd be forced to construct the building on top of his septic field. A separate garage is entirely consistent with the existing neighborhood as they exist at multiple separate garage. Entirely consistent with the existing neighborhood as they exist at multiple homes on the street. Our home is one of those, the setback rules for the neighborhood. Do seem to be excessive and are problematic on some properties as the lots are inconsistently sized and shaped. This unfairly penalizes those property owners who happen to hold properties with narrow contours in the areas most suited to driveway access. An exception to setbacks in this case will not impinge on the views or values of adjacent properties. To the south, the property line has a border hedge of large trees which will conceal the desired structure from view. And already obstructs the view of the fields at Wing Farm. To the west, at the, is the extreme back corner of an extremely elongated property that is also lined with trees. There's simply no practical reason why this request for variance should not be granted. Therefore, we urge you to grant this request for variance, sincerely Ted A. Trower and Alice Trower signed.
Now, Mr. Weiser. This letter is dated August thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, several months ago, why was it not submitted to us before now?
I'm not sure why it wasn't submitted in the, in the variance request. I sent it in as, as evidence for it. To my contractors.
Well, it was not included in any of the materials I have seen. Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, thank you. Anything more from Mr. Harris?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay. Are there any? Members of the public who wish to. Make a statement in support of the petitioner, if so, raise your hand so that you can be identified. Seeing none, Laura, do you see any on your screen? Okay. As far as persons who. Not necessarily. Opposed it, but I'll read into the record. An email that we received from Luwei Wang, that's L U W E I. Last name W A N G. Who lives at. Five, one, oh, one, John Holmes Road. Members of the Scioto Township Zoning Board of Appeals, thank you very much for informing us of the public hearing. Regarding five, one, two, one, John Holmes Road's construction plan. Parentheses, variance number two, one, zero, zero, seven, end parenth, that will be held on Thursday, December sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Our only concern regards the future resale value of our property. Parentheses, five, one, oh, one, John Holmes Road, and our Michigan four, eight, one, oh, three, end parenth. And whether or not our property value will decrease due to variance number two, one, zero, zero, seven. Even if we are okay with someone potentially using this zone for their specific purpose. A future prospective buyer of our property may not be. A prospective buyer that discovers that they may have to deal with an accessory structure that was built against the standard regulations. In the Scioto Township Codified Zoning Ordinance of two thousand nine may choose. To either pass on buying our property completely or lower their offer. We would like to understand. Are there other similar variance scenarios within Scioto Township that have been approved in the past? If so, how has the value of surrounding properties been impacted? If this information could be provided, we'll be happy to better assess and understand the impact of variance number. Two, one, zero, zero, seven on our property, thank you for your consideration, Luwei Wang. Ms. Krebs. Did reply via email. And Laura, I don't have them in front of me, I guess I thought I printed them out and didn't. Do you happen to have your email response? Available, could you read it into the record if you do?
Look, I'll have to find it, give me one second here. Do you have the date of that correspondence?
Not sure this is the date I printed it off. Or the date.
I have it, I have it. So I sent two, I sent two emails, a long one and a shorter one, and I'll read in the first one. In response to Ms. Wang's concern. I said, good afternoon, in order for a variance to be granted, the applicant will need to demonstrate the accessory structure cannot be cited on the property in a manner that can meet ordinance standards. I have provided the portion of the zoning ordinance below that outlines the criteria the ZBA will review. And whether a variance should be granted for the placement of the accessory structure. The ZBA has granted this type of variance before when the applicant has provided information that demonstrates practical difficulty. Meeting ordinance standards and has met the, the criteria. I am not aware of a situation where a zoning variance has impacted neighboring property values. Please let me know if I can be of further assistance. And then I provided ZBA criteria for variance review citing that section of the ordinance, do you want me to read that?
The, yeah, go ahead.
Variances, we're owing to special conditions, a literal enforcement of the provisions of this chapter would involve practical difficulties or cause unnecessary hardship. Within the meaning of this article, the Board of Appeals shall have the power upon appeal in specific cases to authorize such variation or modification of the provisions of this chapter. With such conditions and safeguards as it may determine as may be in harmony with the spirit of the article. And so that public safety and welfare will, welfare be secured and substantial justice done. No such variance or modification of the provisions of this chapter shall be granted unless it appears that all of the following facts and conditions exist. Number one. That there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applicable to the property involved. Or to the intended use of the property that do not apply generally to other properties or class of uses in the same district. Two, that such variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right possessed by other property in the same zone and vicinity. Three, that the granting of such variance or modification will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare or materially injurious. To the property or improvements in such zone or district in which the property is located. Four, that the granting of such variance will not adversely affect the purpose or objectives of the master plan of the township. Five, absent exceptional circumstances which would otherwise result in substantial justice. The circumstances or conditions upon which the variance is based do not result from the actions of the applicant or his predecessors in title. That was my first email, and then I followed up with a second email that just indicated one additional item. If you have specific concerns or issues you would like to raise to the ZBA at the meeting, please feel free to attend via Zoom. And I provided the meeting link below.
Okay, thank you very much. I see Jason's. Hand raised, is that Jason Cooper?
Yes, sir, it is.
It is, how come I've got you on two screens? Do you see that, Laura? Okay, Mr. Cooper, we, we, we've. We're, we're, we're getting through this step by step. What do you intend to say at this point, very, very briefly? Hello? Mr. Cooper?
Yes, I'm, I'm here, I, I'm on my phone and on my, my laptop, so appreciate you guys for. Hearing me.
My, my question is, can, on what issue do you want to speak at this point? Because right now we're going through the list of procedures that, that. I've already gone through at the beginning here, so you're, you're kind of out of order at the moment unless you have a specific. Item that you need to address.
I, I apologize for the parliamentary procedure, Ms. Roth, I, I thought that this was still open forum. To speak on behalf of J and G Construction.
On behalf of J and G Construction?
Yes, sir, I am also owner and, and applicant of, of the variance.
All right, we'll get back to you in just a moment. Are there any other persons? From the public who wish to speak in opposition to. This request? I see no hands raised, Laura, do you see anything? Okay, great. Then let me. Ask the members of the. Board whether they have any questions of the applicant. If so, please raise your hand. Nobody, ah, Ms. Culbertson. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I have a, a couple of questions, so. The letter, I believe, is from a neighbor that's a couple doors down. Did you reach out to any of the immediately adjacent neighbors?
I can speak on that, I did reach out to the neighbor who responded. The direct next door neighbor who responded to you guys. I emailed them, I initially met with them at their front door and gave them my email and then sent them an email and I never heard a response back. I attempted to contact my neighbor.
Is this Ms. Wang, is that who you're referring to?
Correct.
Okay. Are you, are you new to that neighborhood, Mr. Weiser?
Yes, sir, we just purchased the home and we're actually just moving in.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
Okay, and then the next question is. Did you look at adjusting the size, the location? Of the garage, of the proposed structure so that it would meet the setbacks? Because geometrically, it seems like it could happen.
Anybody wish to respond to that, Mr. Weiser, Mr. Harris, Mr. Cooper? Mr. Harris, go ahead.
Yes, so. Geometrically. I, I guess. Yes, it, it may be able to shift, but we would almost be on the corner of the, of the house. That was, that was kind of why we, why we kept it there, is that. The corner of the house and the garage, there wouldn't be much of a, a path to get between the two. And, and we were attempting to try to not connect them, connect one another, one to the other, sorry.
And, and so what about the size, what, what is? You know, criteria for the specific size of that?
And Danny, you can speak on to this as well, the, the number, the number of cars that he wanted to place within that is the, the size. The reason for the size. And Danny, if you have any, any other?
I have two antique vehicles that I need to keep stored indoors and climate controlled. My fiancee and I keep both of our, our daily vehicles in the. In the main garage that's connected to the house right now, but we need the secondary two car garage to keep the. The vintage vehicles safe and protected from the climate.
Let me, let me just.
Can I finish?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I mean, a typical garage for two vehicles isn't that large, could you do with something that was smaller for the two vehicle?
Actually, could I get a clarification, not to cut you off, Ms. Culbertson, but. I thought that the, and I may, may have missed this, but I thought that the petition was for a three car garage. Am I getting that wrong? Anybody, Mr. Harris, Mr. Weiser, Mr. Cooper?
Sorry, I believe it also has space to store like a lawnmower and some bicycles and stuff like that.
This is very, no, it's just a simple question, are you asking for a three car garage?
I, I, I don't know how it would be defined exactly, I only have two cars to store. But I was asking for a garage that's slightly larger than a two car garage to be able to store two cars in some space.
Yeah, the application is for twenty-four by thirty-six feet, I think, is that right?
Yes.
That's, yeah, but, but your, your, your application also refers in two places to a three car garage. Is it possible to do a two car garage? And still meet the setbacks in the general location of what is being proposed? Anyone wish to respond to that? Cooper, Mr. Cooper has his hand raised, go ahead.
So if, if would be acceptable for the committee, we, we would be open to, to. Decrease the size of the garage, but however. Being the nature of the vehicles that we'd like to place in there. The homeowner and the applicant would, would like to have space to. Work on the said vehicles. I also know, note that. It hasn't been brought up in the, in the request, but there is a large. Tree, possibly a hundred year old tree that we've had an arborist look at. Close to the septic field and. We would not like to impede on that at all, so, so that is in addition to. The change of location and the setbacks. And so if, if the committee. Is deliberating and is in question on approving or denying this. I would request that we would table this to the next meeting so that we can supply additional information, so. That would support our request, it's, it's not only the septic, but there's also a very large. Tree in, in, in that vicinity that we do not want to impede on.
I have a follow up question, and this gets to the size of a garage required for two vehicles, and I'm not sure. Obviously, they're antique vehicles. But a minimal size for a two car garage might be, you know, something like twenty by twenty-two. So, do you have an, an idea of what that minimum size would be for the two vehicles that you want to store? And what I'm getting at is, you know, if you decrease the size of this, can you meet the setback requirements and still be able to? House the cars that you wish to?
Does anyone wish to speak to that, Mr. Weiser, Mr. Cooper, Mr. Cooper, your hand is raised again. I don't know whether it was from your last comment or what, go ahead.
No, that's, yeah, I'm just trying to. Be in, in process here, I, I think the intent is. The, the applicant is, is a. He's a purchaser of, of vehicles, and so we, we not only want to build a, a structure that. Has currently in mind with what he currently has, but we want to have some avail, availability. To expand if, if he so chooses to, to buy an additional vehicle, so our intent was. To, to build a structure to support his two vehicles. With, with possibly an addition of a, of a third, if the committee. Does not want to approve the current size, then we can look at that, but we don't. We don't think it's prudent to come back in a twelve month. we don't think it's prudent to come back in a 12 month or 18 months, uh, time horizon to ask for another variance to expand the said structure.
Mr. Mr. Cooper, th- th- Mr. Weiser has made an application for specific, uh, perc- specific accessory building in a, in a particular spot. It's the job of the ZBA to either approve that or not approve it. Okay, do you understand that?
I do, sir.
And if, and if you wanted to build something, if this gets approved and you want to build something bigger, well, you're going to have to go through the same process again. So, thank you very much. Is there anything else, Mr. Cooper? Cause I did cut you off earlier.
No, no, thanks.
Great, thank you. So I'll ask again for the third time. If the three car garage proposed becomes a two car gar- garage and, and reduces in size, will it meet the setback requirements of the code?
In that same location, no, sir, it will not. According to the dimensions that, um, Jane just provided, we will be 14 feet from a side setback and we will be, um, 40 feet from the rear setback.
But you would be able to put it on the other side of the property?
I, I do not know that in order to answer it that quickly. Um,
No, you'd said earlier that it would take some more excavation for this three car garage to go
Yes, sir.
On the other side of the, that's correct. You could do it there. You'd just need more excavation to put in a driveway, as you said.
Yes, and it, yes, and it stands out a lot more than it would if it was on the opposite side of the property.
It would meet, it would meet the setbacks.
I don't, I don't know that answer, um, without pulling the dimensions. I don't have the dimensions for that side of the, the property. I only have the ones for the left, for the left side of the property on me right now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, are there any questions, any other questions from the ZBA members, uh, for the applicant? All right, there's, there's a gentleman with a hand raised and it just says Ted here. Uh, sir, what do you, could you identify who you are?
Well, precisely how would I do that?
Pardon?
I'm Ted Trower. I'm, I'm his neighbor.
Okay, w- we've already gone through the, uh, process of the procedure we've outlined before. What, what briefly do you wish to say?
Well, I live two doors down. I have a three car garage on the south end of my house, much as he's asking to build. You're asking him to build a second driveway in order to get to his second garage. The two property lines that he's impinging upon are both lined with trees. The neighbor immediately to the south has a shed up against that property line on the other side of the trees. It's totally impractical to ask him to build it on the other side of the house. Um, there's no reason that this variance shouldn't be issued.
Okay, thank you. And your last name, sir?
Trower, T R O W E R.
Okay, and you submitted the letter dated August 2021. That's already been read in the record. Thank you. Uh, are there any other, um, ZBA members who have any questions for the applicant? Okay, um, are there any other members of the public who wish to make a statements in support or in opposition? Seeing none, uh, I would solicit a, uh, motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Move by Ms. Culbertson to, to close the public hearing. Mr. Walsh is in support. Mr. Walsh, would you please call the roll?
Hoth?
Yes. Yes. Culbertson?
Yes.
Ramey?
Yes.
Walsh, yes. Shields?
Yes.
Okay, the public hearing now is closed. Um, so at this point, the, uh, ZBA members can deliberate. Let's, uh, let's go around a little bit. Mr. Shields? Would you, have, do you have any thoughts, one way or the other?
Uh, both ways. Uh, I am, uh, I think the fact that there are, seem to be several houses in the area with the same kind of, uh, dimensions, with the same kind of problems that we have apparently granted variances to before, uh, sticks in my mind. It's something that's important.
Which variances are you talking about, Mr. Shields?
Well, this is, uh, Mr. Mr. Trower's note.
Oh, yeah, we have no, yeah, but we don't have any evidence that, that anything was constructed without a variance or when it was constructed, uh, because both, both items are important to judge, uh, you know, whether, whether there was appropriate, uh, uh, appropriate procedure to have them built or whether they've been built, uh, uh, not in conformity.
Yeah. Okay, so then my thought on the other side is that, it's not a, a right to have a three car garage in addition to a two car garage that violates the, um, the ordinance. That, that is a problem.
Well, not because it's the three car garage, is it, Mr. Shields?
No, uh, no, it's just, it's a big structure. It's the size of the structure and impedes on the usings. I mean, impedes on the, um,
Setbacks?
Setbacks.
Okay.
That's, that's the dominant thought in my mind.
Okay, Ms. Ramey? Any thoughts?
Well, I, I'm, I'm sympathetic to the desire to have a, a nice big building in that location and, and I, it certainly seemed as though that would be convenient. But I don't think that the ordinance really, um, uh, addresses that. I mean, I think, I don't think the ordinance permits that just because it would be convenient. It does look as though there are possible alternatives. Um, if you're looking to reduce the, if, if the impingement on the setback is 10 feet in one direction and 12 feet in the other, um, and the building is made 10 feet less and 12 feet less in those dimensions, um, it could be constructed that way. It sounds as though it's possible, uh, that the whole building could be relocated, um, or that it could be, uh, uh, relocated somewhat and then it'd be closer to the house than, um, would be ideal. But given that there are other possible alternatives, I don't really see that the ordinance allows us to grant a variance under those circumstances. Um, I don't, I don't think that, 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 um, having a, a three car or, or a 24 by 36 foot outbuilding, um, is in and of itself a substantial property right that, um, uh, is so important to, uh, to the, um, use and enjoyment of the property that it, uh, requires a variance.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh, any thoughts?
Yeah, just, I guess I'm going to echo what, um, Ramey said. I went out to the site. I looked at it. I understand that the site selected is probably from the applicant's perspective, the ideal spot. Um, I did note the tree in the back and it is substantial. But I'm also at the point that not considering the other houses in the area that may or may not have gotten a variance previously. And again, recognizing that these are individual decisions and we don't set precedent. We've had a few of these this year and we've pretty much agreed unanimously that given alternatives, we asked the applicant to select them rather than the optimal one they picked. And, you know, just for reference, because it was mentioned about the tree line, there's nothing in the code saying that a tree line exempts setbacks.
Okay, Ms. Culbertson, any thoughts on this matter?
Yeah, I agree with the statements made. Um, I also feel like, um, I, I don't think the, um, applicant has demonstrated that they really explored all the alternatives. Um, and so I, um, am not inclined to be in favor of the variance.
Okay. Um, I, uh, would join in that, uh, opinion. Uh, I don't, uh, the question of whether a three car garage is a substantial property right, um, is a question that I had when I was going through this, especially when there's an attached, uh, two car garage. And therefore it's the accessory building as stated is, is for, uh, the storage of, uh, of, uh, vintage vehicles, which is a, you know, by itself is a good idea. But, um, the setbacks, um, established by a side township, uh, are the, what I've always regarded as the bare minimum, um, to keep neighbors apart and to, um, make sure that we're not living on top of one another. And, uh, uh, the applicant has the burden of proof that, uh, that he or she has met all of the requirements of a zoning variance. And I just don't think that that has occurred in this case. Um, I believe that, uh, that, uh, this building could be in its, uh, proposed dimensions located on the other side of the house, uh, albeit with having to do some sort of driveway work or a smaller version of it, uh, may very well, uh, uh, meet the setback requirements. Um, so I, I, I am inclined to be opposed to this variance for the reasons stated by the other members. Uh, any of the other members have any, uh, uh, things they wish to say? All right, in which case I would solicit a, uh, motion from one of the members. Don't be shy.
Um, I, I will move to deny the variance, uh, in, but I'm going to need the variance number again. Um,
It's, uh,
Let's see.
It's variance number.
Yeah, so it would be in the matter of variance number 21007, side and rear yard setback variances at 5121 John Holmes.
And with, with respect to that variance identified by, uh, Ms. Crafts.
Ms. Culbertson, wasn't it?
Oh, Culbertson, I'm sorry. I was looking down and just going by voice. Um, uh, the board, the board's findings in this regard are that there's been a request made for a 24 by 36 foot building, uh, calling for a reduction in the setbacks in one direction of 10 feet and a reduction uh, in the other of, I believe it's 14, 14 feet.
I think that's 12 feet, right?
Uh, 12, okay. 10 feet and 12 feet. Um, the applicant uh, has indicated that this is for, for the purposes of, uh, storing vehicles and doing work on them and storing other items as well. Um, and would be in addition to an existing two car garage. Um, the applicant indicates that, uh, there is a drain field, uh, to the north of the property, uh, which, uh, could be avoided, uh, even if the building, the proposed building were placed elsewhere on the property. And has also indicated that it, it would be, uh, physically possible to meet the setback requirements by either moving the building to another location with associated driveway work, uh, or, uh, it could be, um, the setback requirements could be met by reducing the size of the building. Um, that being the case, um, we are finding that there are no exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applicable to the property involved, uh, that do not apply generally to other properties or classes of use in the same district. Um, we're finding that this variance is not necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right possessed by other property in the same zone or vicinity, uh, in that the, uh, uh, construction of a 24 by 36 foot building, uh, is not a substantial property right, uh, as compared to, uh, for example, a construction of a smaller, uh, smaller building. Uh, so we, we would find that denial of the, the variance is not going to impair any substantial property right, in this case. Um, we're find, we find that the granting of a variance will be materially detrimental to the public welfare, in that impingement on the setback, uh, is contrary to the intent of the ordinance, uh, as expressed by, uh, Mr. Hoth, uh, to maintain distance between properties and, um, um, regulate the density of construction. Uh, and, uh, impinging on that setback, uh, will impair that public interest. Similarly, we find that the granting of the variance will adversely affect the purpose or objectives of the master plan of the township for the same reasons that, uh, uh, there's a, the, the ordinances call for setbacks for a reason in order to maintain the quality of life and the nature of construction in the area, and this would, um, impede that. The circumstances or conditions, uh, upon which the variance is based, were expressed to us as a desire to stay far away from the drain field, a desire not to have to construct more driveway than necessary, and a desire to, um, uh, have the building placed in a convenient location, uh, with respect to the house. And, uh, we're finding that those the, uh, the, uh, conditions that are, are stated for asking for the variance, uh, do result from the actions of the applicant uh, in that they have alternatives, um, on where to cite the property. And so their, uh, desire to cite this building in the location where they are proposing, uh, is a voluntary action of theirs and not anything that is, um, uh, unavoidable or required by the nature of the property. Uh, so for those reasons, um, I would move to deny the requested variance.
All right, uh, motion made by Ms. Ramey to deny. All right, the motion made by Ms. Ramey to deny the requested variance for a side yard setback of 10 feet rather than the required 20 feet and a rear yard setback of 30 feet rather than the required 50 feet for the reasons stated. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Shields. Is there some discussion? I agree with Ms. Ramey's motion, except that I don't believe that the master plan would be affected as I read it. But I understand the sentiment. I would still be in favor of it. Any other discussion?
I'll amend the motion such that Item 4, that the granting of the variance will, the granting of the variance will not adversely affect the purpose or objectives of the master plan. So I will amend the motion to so state.
Okay, amendment of the motion to state that the master plan is not affected by this.
Correct.
Mr. Shields, you had previously seconded that motion. Do you agree with the amendment and desire to second it again?
I do now. That was my one concern, and I appreciate, Tom, you making that point.
Okay, great. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I ask Mr. Walsh to call the roll.
Hoth?
Yes. Culberson?
Yes.
Ramey?
Yes.
Walsh, yes. Shields?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The motion has been approved, and the application is denied. Moving along to the next item on the agenda. Old business. Actually, the agenda says none, but to reiterate what was said before, the January meeting and all future meetings at this point are going to be, thanks to the legislature, in person as far as the board members go, so but it will be a hybrid as far as the members of the public, they can appear on behalf of Zoom. I don't think it's a good idea. I think it ought to be virtual all the way through, but I don't have the power to do anything about that. Okay, the next item is minutes of the...
Tom, can I make a comment?
Sure.
Whoever is running that meeting, probably get a little bit of training beforehand so that the camera work is all correct. It's it's pretty straightforward, but I think in terms of getting into comfort zone, it's a good idea.
Are you trying to imply that Ms. Krebs did not do a good job the last time?
Oh, I forgot. I do this for tap.
But you could also do it for ZBA.
No. Never mind. I retract my comment.
Actually, I had...
Laura, that's so good.
I think I spoke to Ms. Krebs about this earlier around the time of the last meeting, but she did a good job. Once you learn the little tricks about moving the camera around, it's not that hard. It's got to be on your toes. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the minutes of November 18, 2021, which were not part of the packet. However, we were all furnished with by email, the minutes just yesterday, I think they came in. And has everyone had a chance to review them?
Yep.
Okay. Let me get my notes. I had a couple of corrections to it. I had two corrections, minor corrections. On page four, under paragraph number three, the third line from the bottom of that paragraph, it says, "The setbacks are in place for the benefit of adjourning neighbors", and that should be adjoining neighbors. And the second... Where's that noise coming from? Is it from me? The second one is on page six. A minor correction under deliberations by the board, bullet point Commissioner Hoth. It should read, "I think whole-house generators will become", one word, "become" instead of "be come", a substantial property right. Those are my corrections to the minutes. Does anybody else have anything? Have they noted anything? Mr. Shields?
Even more minor than those, but at the bottom of the first page, under Item 8, Public Hearings, you've got variance number 21003, comma, Brent.
Hold on a second, Patrick. It's page one, under what?
Under Item 8, Public Hearing. So the first line, we've got a comma after Brent.
Stop, 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 stop.
Sorry.
I don't see that on page one. You're talking about page two?
No, I'm sorry. It's in the... It's in the agenda. My mistake. It's in the agenda.
We're talking minutes here, Mr. Shields, not the agenda.
Right, right.
Focus now. Focus. That's all right. Just kidding. Any other corrections to the minutes? Then I would solicit... Go ahead, Bob.
Since we're doing the nitpicking, on page four, paragraph five, getting the circumstances. We look at our actions of the applicant or his predecessors, in title, not end title.
Right, two words, in title.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Then I would solicit a motion to approve the minutes of November 18, 2021, with those corrections. So moved.
移到
Moved by Mr. Walsh, supported by Ms. Culberson to so approve. Mr. Walsh, please call the roll.
Hoth? Yes. Culberson?
Yes.
Ramey?
Yes.
Can I ask a procedure question since Ramey was not at the meeting? Can she approve?
I think technically she can, yeah.
Thank you. Walsh, yes. Shields?
Yes.
Okay, the motion to approve the minutes is corrected, is approved. Next item on the agenda is other business, of which there is noted to be none. Does anybody have any other business of any sort?
Planning Commission update?
Pardon?
You have a planning commission update, if there is any?
Yes, that's what we need, and we, you know, we really should put that as a separate item on the agenda, but we'll deal with that later. Letter. Yeah, what's going on, Ms. Culberson? Tell us what's happening.
Yeah, so we did approve the master plan, and it has not been... I've noticed, I looked today, and it hasn't been uploaded to the website yet under the master plan links, but it is in effect, so we're moving forward. And the zoning ordinance amendment committee will start working on... There is a list of certain ordinances that have been identified that they're going to start work on. I also want to say that the Environmental Sustainability Task Force has been meeting since August, and there is a link on the website under that task force that has all of the research and meeting minutes and so forth. That group, because it's advisory to advisory, will continue in a virtual format, so anyone can, you know, participate at any time. And there is also... The county is initiating its climate action plan and will be starting public outreach in January. We are looking for some ambassadors that could represent SIO Township in that county planning process, and I do have some information on that. They are willing to pay for the training of those ambassadors. So if there are folks that might be interested in that, to go ahead and contact me, and you can do that by PC Chair at siotownship.org.
What does the planning commission have to do with with the climate initiative of the county?
Okay, of the county. Well, because the Environmental Sustainability Task Force is also, you know, looking at some of the same issues that the county's climate action plan will be taking up, we're obviously looking to coordinate with them.
Okay, thank you. All right, then I have nothing else on the agenda, and I can't think of anything, although for the life of me, I think there's one other thing we should be discussing, but I believe we probably...
I think Mr. Walsh has his...
I was just going to add one little item, Mr. Chairman, to save you an email later. Just a reminder to turn your binders in to the township.
Exactly. That's one of the things I was going to say. Other than that, anybody have anything else? Okay. Well, then I solicit a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Support. Moved by Ms. Culberson, supported by Mr. Walsh to adjourn the meeting. Mr. Walsh, call the roll.
Hoth?
Yes. Culberson?
Yes.
Ramey?
Yes.
Walsh, yes. Shields?
Yes.
Okay, meeting is adjourned. We'll see you in person in January. Bring your masks, please. We'll go from there. Thank you.
Recording stopped.